Okay, good evening, everyone. I will call our meeting to order. This is our regular city council meeting of March 23rd, 2021, which is being held virtually via WebEx. And the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone can please put their camera on and unmute themselves and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Republic which stands one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is our open forum, and I will pass it to Assistant Winn to see if anybody is here for the open forum and to let people know how they can participate as well in the open forum.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try and pull up a quick little screenshot here. All right, can y'all see that?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. So, we encourage residents to participate live during our public open forums. You can participate live by calling 612-861-0651. And you can have three minutes to state your comments to council. You can also participate by having your comments read by submitting them ahead of time. You can call 612-861-9711. Or you can email myself at kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. There should be a D in Richfield. I see that I'm missing that. But then again, that's kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. I currently do not have any callers on the line.
Thank you. We'll wait a little bit just to see if anyone decides to join. Okay, I'll ask one more time. Has anyone decided to join us for the open forum?
I do not have any callers for the open forum.
Great, thank you. I will close the open forum seeing that we have nobody here. And I will move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the City Council Work Session of March 9th, 2021, the RBWMO Annual Meeting of March 9th, 2021, and the City Council Meeting of March 9th, 2021.
Supple so moved to approve the minutes.
All right, the minutes have been approved or moved by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Analyst Martinez-Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
Wayland, so moved.
Councilmember Troutman, second.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Analyst Martinez-Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is the Consent Calendar, and that goes to Acting City Manager Pam Demetranko.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's Consent Calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the Consent Calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved, and no further council action on those items is necessary. There are three items on the Consent Calendar for this evening. Item A, consider the approval of a bid tabulation and award of contract to Park Construction Company for the 2021 Millan Overlay Project in the amount of $525,858.77, and authorize the city manager to approve the contract charges/changes under $175,000 without further City Council consideration. Item B, consider the approval of the bid tabulation and award of contract to Visu Sewer, Inc. for the 2021 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Program in the amount of $456,435.05, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes up to $175,000 without further City Council consideration. And item C, approval of a resolution amending the allocation of the 2020 General Fund Budget. And that concludes tonight's Consent Calendar.
Thank you, City Manager. Would someone like to make the motion?
Councilmember Troutman, so moved.
Councilmember Supple, second.
Thank you. The Consent Calendar has been moved by Councilmember Troutman and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Are there any comments or questions from council on the Consent Calendar? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I just wanted to comment on the Millan Overlay contract to recognize, I think this is the last year or the last final pieces of our big Millan Overlay, so I think that's kind of neat and worth briefly celebrating.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? All right, Analyst Martinez-Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The Consent Calendar has been approved. The next item, item number four, goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Excuse me, I'm trying to scroll to the right spot here. All right, thank you. All right, so this is a public hearing to consider the approval of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license with outside service and optional 2:00 AM closing for Pizza Luce 7, Inc. doing business as Pizza Luce located at 800 West 66th Street. On February 17th, 2021, the city received an application for the new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses with outside service and the optional 2:00 AM closing for Pizza Luce 7, Inc. doing business as Pizza Luce located at 866th Street West. All required information and documents have been received. All licensing fees have been paid. The Public Safety Background Investigation has been completed. The results of that investigation were summarized in the report that was in the packet. The Public Safety Director has reviewed the background investigation report, and there is nothing in that report that would cause the Public Safety Director to recommend denial of the requested licenses. And then just one thing to call out from the historical context that I thought was important was that they previously held the same license until COVID and then went down last year and are now seeking to return to the license they previously had. Is staff like to add anything before we open the public hearing?
Mayor, Councilmembers, this is Anderson. I, as staff, don't have anything additional to add.
Thank you. Okay, let's open the public hearing unless there's other questions for staff from council. Okay, Assistant Winn, could you read the instructions for calling in?
Of course. So again, we encourage residents to participate live with our public hearings. And you can participate live by calling 612-861-0651, and you can submit your comments to council. Residents can also have their comments read by staff, and you can submit those prior to meetings. You can call my office at 612-861-9711. Or you can email myself at kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. I currently do not have any callers on the line.
Okay, we'll give it a little bit of time, and we do, we do the applicant present as well, right?
Yes.
Would they like to speak at this time, or you don't have to?
Hi, this is JJ Haywood. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Hello. I can't see myself anymore. Thanks for getting this on the agenda tonight. It's been a long, a little bit more than a year, and we are very much looking forward to reopening our dining room for the first time since COVID has gone on the indoor dining room. I'm joined here tonight by Scott Sherman, our GM of Pizza Luce, Richfield. So, thank you for coming.
Do we have any callers, Assistant Winn?
I do not have any callers.
Okay, we're at about 90 seconds, so I will move that we close the public hearing.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
All right, the motion has been made by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary to close the public hearing and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Analyst Martinez-Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The public hearing has been closed. Go ahead.
All right, I will move that we approve the issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license with outside service and the optional 2:00 AM closing for Pizza Luce 7, Inc. doing business as Pizza Luce at 800 West 66th Street.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Any comments or questions from council members on the item? Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Ms. Hayward and just say that we appreciate Pizza Luce so much. I remember when it was a Bridgman's. And I was just thinking about the stories my grandmother told about dates she used to go on in that building to the vault shop there. And so, thank you for the investment that you've made in that, in that space, and we're really excited. It's going to continue to be a place of community and hospitality in our, in our city.
Thank you. We love hearing stories about Bridgman's. We still have the original doors, too, the ice cream doors in the dining room. We have to come visit.
That's great.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll look for them, but I, I love the pizza there. I love the food there. We're looking forward to going back.
Great.
And I'll just echo what Councilmember Troutman said. Thank you for the applicant for coming, and our family very much enjoys Pizza Luce, and we're very thankful to have you in our community. But also, I've been a part of so many community meetings at Pizza Luce where folks have talked about priorities around social justice, the environment, getting to know one another. And Pizza Luce is just one of the places that everyone wants to go to. We have our legal women voters meetings there. We have birthday parties there, all kinds of celebrations. So, we definitely consider you such an important part of our community, and not just a gathering place, but a place where a lot of awesome action and change happens and, and people connect. So, thank you for coming today, and I just wanted to, to add a little extra thanks.
Thank you. That is exactly how we want to show up in community.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council members? All right, Analyst Martinez-Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The item has been approved. Thank you so much for showing up tonight and coming. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. The next item, item number five, goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is to consider an approval of an amendment to the city zoning code that would allow for large garage structures if an ancillary dwelling unit is attached. In, in the single-family R and R-1 residential districts, and approval of the related summary publication ordinance. In 2005, the city adopted rules that would allow construction of accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, in the single-family residential districts. These rules allowed the construction of internal attached and detached ADUs provided a number of criteria were met. The rules did not increase the allowable square footage of the garages or total square footage of all the combined accessory structures. In an effort to promote increased, and increase the viability of ADUs, staff is proposing modest changes to the existing regulations that apply to attached ADUs. The intent of the detached ADU standards has been to allow units that are attached to garage rather than an additional standalone structure. The thought being that this helps to control the aesthetics of the ADU and minimizes the number of large accessory structures on a single lot. In light of several discussions with prospective ADU builders, staff is proposing an ordinance amendment allowing the first 400 square feet of a garage attached ADU to be deducted from the 1,000-square-foot floor area limit of that garage. This will allow both a reasonably sized space for vehicle storage, two-car garage, and the dwelling unit. Garage-attached ADUs would still need to comply with overall accessory structure maximums and height limitations. Detached ADUs offer more privacy than an internal or home-attached unit and will offer additional support and more, or for more affordable and flexible living styles. So, the, the first motion is to approve an ordinance of amendment related to the garage size in the single-family residential R1 and R2 districts. But first, I just wanted to give staff an opportunity to, to speak into that a little bit or share any, any context.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. I just wanted to add that this came up over, it came up in regard to a particular application. And the applicant, John Sylvester, and Ms. Margaret McInerney are here tonight as well, but it came up when an ADU application came in, and staff reviewed this as we've reviewed, or at least discussed, a number of ADUs with different applicants over the years. And, you know, these regulations are relatively new. ADUs are something that we've wanted to encourage. And once we got to this application, we thought, well, you know, this is a regulation. This is a relaxation of the regulation that we think really makes sense and would make sense on other properties. It's not something that would meet the test to, to be granted a variance, but it's something that we think should be applied across the city. So, we encouraged the applicant to apply for an ordinance change instead of a variance. And staff is very supportive of this, and the applicant is here in case you have any specific questions about their project. We did attach those plans so that you could see what they were proposing and kind of understand how this would work on a lot, and hopefully see that this is reasonable and something that we'd like to move forward with.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Pellman. Could we give the residents a chance to speak? Would you, would you folks like to address the council briefly and share a little bit about what you're doing?
But, okay. I was gonna say, if I could figure out how to unmute this, I, I would love to say, first of all, Mayor Gonzalez and council members and staff, thanks for just letting me say a few words about my ADU. So, I'll introduce myself first. I'm Margaret McInerney. I'm 71, and I've been a widow for six years. I've got four kids, and my youngest son, Patrick, and his wife, excuse me, they own the property in Oakland where I hope to build the ADU. So, when I decided to downsize, my son, Patrick, decided, he suggested that I build a tiny house in his backyard, which I thought was pretty great because I really didn't want to live in a high-rise or in a 55-plus community. I like the chaos of family life. So, like Melissa said, we decided an ADU attached to the garage would give us the most privacy for them and for me. I'd be close to them, but I'd have my own space. I wouldn't be living in the basement. So, I embarked on the design and planning with John Sylvester. He's here, and we've worked with Melissa and Nellie in the planning department since, oh, what would you say, Melissa? Maybe last summer, late summer? And we started working within the zoning requirements. The 1,000 square feet was a little tough because when you subtract the size of the garage in the proposal, which was 528 square feet, I would be left with 472 square feet of living space. And I did a little research, and that's significantly smaller than an average one-bedroom Richfield apartment, and actually a little smaller than a studio apartment. So, you know, we've been, we've been working really hard on this, and I think the amendment will allow additional living space, not just for me, which it's not always about me, but I wish it was, but for other people in the community who might be thinking of building an ADU for intergenerational living and for people like me that want to live close to their family and age and place. So, you know, I'm healthy. I like, I like the community. I've got a lot of stuff I'd like to do. So, I'm excited to see this project come to life, and, and I hope I have a place to live this winter. And, and that's it. So, if you have any questions for me or for John Sylvester, he's the designer. And thank you for the opportunity to, to say a few words.
If I, if I could have the floor for just a second, one of the challenges in designing a ADU for aging people is to try to keep things on one level. And the, we were having a bit of a challenge trying to get everything to fit on one level, and that's what really has pushed this to the point where we want to increase the size just a little bit so that we can get it all on one level. We were able to meet all the other setback requirements, height requirements, all of those things to make this work. So, I think that this would make a lot of sense, and it would be a great thing for Richfield as well. Also, the lot that we're working on is a, quite a large lot in Richfield. We probably wouldn't have undertaken this project if it hadn't been on a lot that was of the size of this one. So, thank you for hearing this, and we look forward to the results.
Thank, thank you both for making the investment in Richfield.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I'm certainly excited about this. I, I was just curious about one thing, since they're demolishing the garage and redoing it. One requirement that we have is that it has to be attached to the garage on one structure, but in this case, it's essentially two structures that are just touching each other. I mean, I'm just curious, would you, would you have done that if it weren't for that requirement? Like, would you have still knocked down the garage and built a new one, or did you do that just to comply with that rule?
That's a really great question. Because of the requirement in Richfield that it has to be one building, in order to make a building an ADU that can, that's weather resistant, we have to put frost footings around everything. So, that required us to take down the garage in order to make sure the whole structure is frost protected. So, it's, it's an unfortunate circumstance in this case that we had to take the garage down.
Okay, thanks, thanks for clarifying that. And again, I think the, the story is just super cool. I would love it. My dad just turned 70, and I would love if he, if he wanted to put the money in and do this himself in my backyard.
Right.
I just wanted to add one more thing about the garage. I under, I totally get it about the frost footings, but the way the garage is positioned now is really close to the house, so there's a lot of the yard that's kind of not being used at all. So, we're able to move the garage a little further south, so there will be more usable yard, which will be kind of nice and fun to do some great landscaping.
That's, that's wonderful. And before, before we move, I, I'll just, maybe I'll just save it for discussion. Are there, are there any other comments? No other comments?
I was just gonna add, on both of the recommenda, or both of the actions can, can be done in one motion, Councilmember Troutman.
Oh, thank you. Well, then I would move an ordinance, an amendment related to garage size in the single-family residential R1 and R2 districts and approve the resolution authorizing summary publication of the attached ordinance amending regulations related to garage size in the single-family residential R and R1 districts.
Hayford O'Leary, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Troutman and seconded by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Any comments or questions? And I see Councilmember Supple has one.
I just wanted to comment that I think this is great because it'll allow that single-level living, and we've talked a lot about accessibility of late, and I think that adds to the fact that it can be more accessible if you're not having to climb stairs and get up to a second level. So, I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to ask staff, this is a little beyond the scope of exactly what we're deciding today, but I know there was a initiative project in the works to offer for folks thinking about adding an ADU to offer like some example plans of what that might look like, and just in the broader sense of continuing to encourage this as an option for folks. If staff would be able to give a brief update on any next steps or what's already been done or is in the works?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Wayland and Mayor Reagan Gonzalez and council members. I, I don't know exactly where we're at in terms of plans, making plans available to the public, but I can tell you that we are looking at all of the HRA programs and looking for ways to further incentivize ADUs participating in those programs. Oftentimes, we like to pilot a project to show the community that's, that is doable, and it's our hope still to find a family that wants to work with us that meets some of our, some of our requirements for assistance and develop a pilot ADU that's also either affordable or accessible, one or the other. So, again, that's something that HRA, we're hoping that we're able to accomplish. And we're also, you know, in the work session, we talked about the missing middle a little bit. I think the ADU could have a, a role in that. We're looking at the HRA programs to see how they do or don't address the missing middle, including ADUs, to make sure that we are not leaving every, any kind of type of housing out of our programming. So, I don't know if that answers the question, but we are, it's something we're very serious about. We spend a lot of time at the staff level talking about ADUs and about these kind of alternate housing types. And it's possible that Assistant Director Pellman has something more to add.
Thank you. I did want to mention that we do have a page on our website dedicated to ADUs, and it has a link to the Family Housing Fund, which provides a guidebook with some example plans. And then it also provides a link to our Architectural Consultation Program, which is if someone wanted to make changes at their own house, we subsidize working directly with an architect to do that. So, those are, those are available on the website. You just need to search for ADU, and it will come up.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to say several things. First, I wanted to just, just share a really big thank you to our staff, especially because as there, as you're hearing feedback from citizens, I just want to recognize and appreciate how much they, they're just being responsive, even bringing this ordinance change before us and working with them to make things more accessible. I'm really grateful for, for that, that additional work. And, and also just want to encourage and continue to be wind in the sails for continuing to look at ways to, to make ADUs more feasible in our community, and I'm really gratified to hear that those conversations are going on. And I'll put the marker out there. I'd love to see, I think the aesthetic would be wonderful if we had detached ADUs. I don't think that would destroy the aesthetic. I think that would add a lot to the community. And I know that's a, that's a community conversation we need to have as a community, but I just want to go on record to think, to say, I think that would be, that would be great. But thank you, guys, for continuing, gals, for, for continuing to have that conversation. I also just wanted to say that this, this means a lot to me personally, my own personal story. Folks, folks shared about, in our work session, about how in our work session about how they came to Richfield. Our family came to Richfield when my grandparents were downsizing and they found a home, a home that we're in right now that had a two-bedroom unit and a bathroom that was separated from, from the rest of the home. And that made our multi-generational home possible. And, and we were able to, when, when family, family situations changed, we were able to sell our, our, the home that my family bought. And we were able to, to come back to our family home, which is still an intergenerational home where my father, who bought this home to accommodate his, his parents. Now we have a mixed family, even as my dad's a widower now. And we're, we're still together in a multi-generational family. And it's just, it's so, we, we love it. We're so grateful for that opportunity. I'm so glad to hear Ms. McInney that, that you enjoy that too and get value out of that. And you're able to, to facilitate that and accommodate that as a family and enjoy, enjoy family and togetherness and community like that. And so this just makes me real, just, I'm just so grateful and pleased to be able to support this, this motion.
Thank you, councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Again, this sort of a future thing that we should be thinking about to echo what councilmember Troutman said and what the architect said earlier about the issue of having to demolish garages. I hope that we would be open to revising our code if somebody is looking to do a fully detached ADU. I know a lot of homeowners in the last 10 or 15 years have invested $20,000, $30,000 in a new garage. And I hate that to mean that they would be throwing that money away if they had to build an ADU because they'd have to demolish it and do it over again. So it's, it's one thing if it doesn't come up, it doesn't come up, but I would certainly be open to changing that in the future.
Thank you, councilmember Hayford O'Leary. And I just want to say thank you to the applicant and to the architect for putting in an ordinance change and requesting an ordinance change when you could have just had something specific to your, to your, what you're doing. But this is obviously going to benefit our entire city. So thank you for being a part of that. And thank you to our staff for recommending that and working on the project hand in hand with the applicant along the way. So this is a great outcome for the family, but also for our entire city. So thanks, a huge thanks to the applicant and our staff for making that happen.
Thank you. Thanks as well to Melissa and Nellie. It's, it's been a long road, but it's, I've learned a lot, that's for sure. I'm excited to be a Richfield resident.
That's exciting. Thank you so much. All right, Analyst Martinez-Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. Thank you, everyone. We look forward to stopping by and saying hi and checking it out.
That's great. I'll, I'll have cookies or muffins ready.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you. The next item goes to councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This item is to consider a resolution supporting the city of Richfield's application to host a Minnesota Green Corps member and authorizing the city manager to execute a host site agreement with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. City staff have submitted a host site application to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency to host a Minnesota Green Corps member from September 2021 through August of 2022. The Green Corps member would assist the city in increasing residential recycling and organics diversion and meeting waste reduction goals by educating and engaging with community members about new and existing waste management programs and initiatives. These projects specifically include residential curbside organics collection, recycling services for multi-unit residential buildings, as well as sharing resources and promoting reuse and waste reduction opportunities. So I, Director Merkel, did you have anything you guys wanted to add?
Yeah, thank you, councilmember Supple. We're really excited to put another application in for this highly regarded program in partnership with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. We had such good luck our first go-around in 2018 and 2019. Sustainability specialist Rachel Lindholm was our Green Corps member. And she's just continued to do tremendous work for us. She launched our drop-off program for organics. And I really feel like Richfield's a great place to host a Green Corps member. We have so much work to do in the realm of sustainability with all of our goals and initiatives. So there's just no shortage of work. And so we're so excited to have the opportunity to potentially host another Green Corps member and, you know, make it a great learning opportunity for them and us and get a lot of work accomplished. It's very competitive. There's usually hundreds of applicants and limited number of sites and, and funds are, are designated to the program. So we'll learn in the coming months if we are selected, but we're hopeful if we are that they would start this fall and hopefully be with us for a good portion of a year.
So I would like to move that we approve the resolution supporting the city of Richfield's application to host a Minnesota Green Corps member and authorizing the city manager to execute a host site agreement with Minnesota Pollution Control Agency.
Councilmember Troutman, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Supple and seconded by councilmember Troutman. Any comments or questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Troutman.
Do we get to have another great team member like, like Rachel Lindholm? Because that would be amazing.
Hopefully. Hopefully. Yeah, like, like Director Merkel said, this would be, this is a resolution to support our application. We also got letters of support from the mayor and Hennepin County as well. So it just is well-rounded. You know, building a well-rounded application. And I would be very grateful for the chance to help supervise another Green Corps member.
Councilmember Supple, then councilmember Whalen.
I just want to say this is very exciting. So I'm hoping that we are going to be successful and get another Green Corps member.
I was going to ask a clarifying question. Having done a different volunteer corps program myself, I knew that our placement site in that program did have, like, did pay the stipend and whatever. And just wanted to clarify from the notes in the packet, it sounds like, I mean, there's not zero financial impact, but that there's not a, it's all sort of indirect and that there's not like a direct where paying their stipend or anything, which is great if that's true. I just wanted to make sure that that's actually the case.
Yeah, thank you for that question, councilmember Whalen. It is true that the funding that goes towards their stipend comes through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And the cost to the city, you know, just staff time and then, you know, we have a small budget in case they need mileage reimbursement for the work as they move around the city. But also it's very minimal financial impacts for us, which is tremendous.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's worth investing in, but even better that someone else is going to invest in it for us. So if, if we get it, yeah.
Yeah, just to, to clarify on the record, the funding comes from AmeriCorps and SERVE Minnesota. So the PCA is like the channel. And so yes, the city is not, does not pay for the stipend, like Director Merkel said.
Other comments or questions from councilmembers? I'll just, oh, councilmember Troutman, go ahead.
I was just gonna say very briefly that if we are successful in obtaining another Green Corps member, it's due in no small part because of, of the smashing success of Rachel Lindholm. And I'm, I'm certain that our application is more competitive because you've done well, so well and moved so many balls forward on so many levels. So I just can put that out there.
Thank you, councilmember. Appreciate it.
I'll just say we've advanced leaps and bounds in the area of sustainability over the past few years. And I'm very proud of that as a city and as a community. And our staff has just done a tremendous job in leading the way. And I'm crossing my fingers. I hope we get it. We have a very, very compelling application. So good luck and we'll, we'll be very happy to support this. Analyst Martinez-Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider approving the drafted Richfield Residential Solid Waste Management Goals. Our sustainability efforts related to responsible waste management and reduction have increased over the past few years with the creation of the organics drop-off program, the introduction of recycling in the parks, the consideration of organized collection and more. These projects work toward the solid waste management goals set by the MPCA and adopted by the county. However, it's become apparent that the city would benefit from adopting Richfield's specific solid waste goals to help track our community's progress on a smaller scale over the next few years. The draft has five goals to address program participation, resident education, decreasing overall waste tonnage, and understanding the breakdown of the waste streams. Reaching these targets and being able to report back what the city's been doing will help guide future sustainability and waste management efforts. Would staff like to add anything or say more? And I'm hoping yes, and maybe to summarize a bit what the, the draft goals are.
Sure. Thank you, councilmember Whalen. So as we just talked about with the, the Green Corps resolution, sustainability work and goals have been happening fast and furiously with the city of Richfield. And it's great news. We have been especially focused on a lot of waste management efforts. And all of that is, you know, as it relates to goals that other agencies like the MPCA and Hennepin County have adopted. However, as we look at Richfield's specific goals, it's become apparent with publications like the Climate Action Plan that we need to have specific goals to really document how well we're doing in Richfield as well. That doesn't necessarily, it adds to the state objectives, but they're different. They're more specific. So this adds on to resident work, like what the Sustainability Commission has been doing. In fact, these goals have been approved by the Sustainability Commission and really helps guide our waste management efforts through the next few years as we've tackled several different objectives and projects under this umbrella. This will kind of help structure them a little bit. So in response to explaining the goals specifically, I can talk about the, the targets themselves, if, if that's desired by councilmembers. I don't, I don't want to take up that time though if, if rehashing each target individually is not necessary. So I'd like direction from, from council on that.
Can you do a brief review? Oh, go ahead, councilmember Whalen.
I know it's in the packet, but for folks who are listening in and maybe didn't read it, I think it'd be good. I think this is important and I know we're, we don't have a super long council meeting tonight. So I think it'd be worth, they're short bullet points, worth reading through them.
Sure. For accessibility reasons, am I able to share my screen and then I can have them on for people to read as well? Think I can do that? Let me just try. Can you all see that?
Yep.
Okay, great. So as you can see, the, the targets, these are the goals that we've been talking about are listed along with a little narrative that basically describes what we've all already been talking about. So specifically about the targets, we are hoping to have 25 to 40% of households, you know, participating in residential curbside organics. We know this has been a thing that a lot of community members have been asking for. And, you know, we do hope to bring that to Richfield in, excuse me, zooming in, in 2021. That is a bit of a range just because it is hard to gauge how successful that program would be from the beginning. You know, just with how it's happened in other cities. So, you know, a solid third of the city is, is on average with what other residential organics programs have. You know, we also want to look at waste reduction. And specifically, what does that mean for the number of residents who are producing less trash and therefore needing more infrequent trash service? So 30% of households choosing every other week trash service, which is also a service that we hope to bring to the city this year, and/or weekly 35-gallon trash, which is the current smallest size that residents can have in Richfield. And so seeing a number, a substantial number like that would really show progress in waste reduction. And then if organized collection does pass and come to Richfield, you know, we would use a system to calculate the percentage breakdown for solid waste generation. It is currently with an open system of very, very difficult to track that information with different haulers and, and different operation systems and things like that. It doesn't lend itself well to the city understanding the full picture of solid waste generation. And so year after year, we would be able to compare that data to help explain Richfield's kind of waste management story and use that to tailor education and resources for residents as well. That would work hand in hand with decreasing the total tons of solid waste, lowering the amount of trash while increasing the amount of recycling and organics that is, you know, properly discarded or separated. And then lastly, really focusing on educational opportunities around solid waste. Everything from offerings at Wood Lake to working in partnership with the schools, other community groups, local businesses, faith groups. We've had a lot of institutions and groups trying to do these efforts on their own, like bringing compostable cups to churches and things like that. And we really want to try and increase the amount of educational opportunities that are present for Richfield residents. You know, having streamlined solid waste management guides, like an annual recycling guide that all residents get, it has the same information. You know, staff are able to better answer resident questions, things like that. This would also help result in engaging in at least 300 residents through in-person and virtual workshops annually. And then of course, understanding how effective our educational offerings are with, you know, post-survey feedback or post-workshop feedback and things like that. So there, the targets, you know, it's about participation, it's about education. It's kind of a little of everything, all with the goal of being more mindful of the waste we generate and how we dispose of it.
Thank you. With that, I will make a motion that we approve the Richfield Residential Solid Waste Management Goals.
Hayford O'Leary, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Whalen and seconded by councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Any comments or questions from council? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I just wanted to reiterate again that I'm excited about a goal of curbside organics. Although, you know, 25% sounds like not that much, like that's still three-quarters not doing it. But that would be such a quantum leap from the number of people participating today. So it's such a huge step in the right direction. I would also say for anybody watching who was looking at, Minneapolis had 40% within a year. So let's see if we can beat them.
Yeah, it's, they're good statistics for sure. Minneapolis, actually, they just hit 50% this year. So it's, it's kind of slow growth for sure. 25% for context of Richfield program would be about 2,500 households too. If an organized collection program includes about 10,000 households. So for everyone who's wondering, what is 25 or 40%? It's working off of an estimation of 10,000 households.
And the current drop-off thing, is it like a few hundred families participating or how much?
Yeah, we're, the drop-off program, so it's the two sites at Hope Church and Wood Lake Nature Center. It's about a little over 900 households. So, you know, if the average household has two and a half people, several thousand Richfield residents, which, you know, we're really proud of that for sure.
Other comments or questions from council? Councilmember Whalen.
I just will echo what councilmember Hayford O'Leary said. Certainly hear a lot about this and folks excited for it. And appreciate the, as you were fleshing out the goal on educational opportunities, having until recently worked in a church, I would agree that until recently worked in a church, I would agree that there are many groups trying to figure this out on their own and looking for how to do this kind of thing. And so absolutely think offering more educational opportunities. And also just trying to kind of connect those groups with each other, or at least with some resources. All of that is absolutely the direction we need to be going. So I'm excited for this work to continue.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from council? Another awesome example of amazing work we're doing around sustainability. Thank you so much, Rachel and Amy, and to our staff for leading this work and for our really great resident leaders. I feel like in this area of sustainability, we have exceptional resident leaders as well. So thanks to the, to our residents who have been doing this work. Analyst Martinez-Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you so much. The motion has been approved. The next item is the city manager's report with City Manager Demetranko.
Well, thank you, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez and council members. First, I just want to say that it's been a great evening to sit in for City Manager Rodriguez. I feel really fortunate to just hear all the great work that's going on in our community. So many wonderful initiatives and progress. So anyway, it's, it's been a great evening for me. And I just wanted to give a brief COVID update. I did reach out to Jennifer Anderson, our health administrator, earlier today. And so she asked me to just give you a quick update. There's significant planning underway on the mobile clinic concept. That's in an effort to connect with those who don't have access to the vaccine. Bloomington Public Health has provided over 6,000 vaccine shots as of March 18th to Bloomington Edina Richfield residents and workers. And vaccine options continue to expand for residents and staff. So that's exciting news, obviously. As of today, cases in Richfield are at 3,454 and there have been 42 deaths. So that's the update, but things are changing every day on this front, as you all know. And, and more and more of our staff are getting vaccinated and community members. So that's great news. And that's my report for this evening.
Great. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions from council members? Thank you very much. The next item is claims and payroll. I will pass it to Councilmember Wayland.
I will move claims and payroll.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Analyst Martinez-Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. The next item is hats off to hometown hits, and I'll start with Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez. At school, we've been working with the kids. There, we had kindness week and now we've had gratitude week. And we've been talking about the importance of both kindness and gratitude. And it caused me to pause and reflect of all the things that I'm grateful for from our community. And I think back to all the examples I see of compassion and kindness and hospitality and people listening to each other, offering meals to people, helping their neighbors, greeting people, all the essential workers and the volunteers and the staff and everybody working together to help us all. And so there's a lot of things to be grateful for in our community. And I also want to say that I'm really grateful for all the people who through their words and their actions have made it clear that hate and bigotry do not have a place in our community. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone and to let you know that I'm very grateful for all of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, speaking of gratefulness, I, I just think, I really want to take a moment and just thank everybody and take our hats off to our whole city. We're, we're coming up on a year of this pandemic. And I'm just so deeply grateful. And I just want to encourage everybody, I think, I'm really grateful for Jennifer Anderson's update and Assistant City Manager Demetranko's update about vaccines that are coming, that are on the way. I was really grateful. My father was vaccinated just a week or so ago. And for, for everybody that's tired of hanging on, and I know our staff, I, we can't say it enough times, you guys have done so much and flexed, flexed so much. And I know every one of our residents has, but as we get tired of masks and we get tired of protocols, we're, we're doing really well and we're saving lives. We're, we're moving in a great direction. And so I just want to take my hats off to our community. I'm so grateful to be here and be going through this, this pandemic with, with all my neighbors. But just hang on, we are, we're moving in a great direction. So that, that's my hats off for tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor.
For some reason, I thought you had already done, but you didn't. My bad.
No worries. So I have two things. One, just that I know it's been shared before, but just wanted to continue encouraging folks, especially who are near the Portland and 494 interchange or intersection, that we, there's an ongoing project to explore the options there as the 494 project looks at reconfiguring access in that area. And so there's, I just shared it on my Facebook page. I know it's on Richfield and Bloomington City page since it's a joint effort with them. But there's like an interactive map where you can add comments and surveys depending on if you're a resident or business owner in the area. So please consider, if you're in that area and want to shape what the future of that looks like, being part of those. And then the second thing, I just want to share, I'm excited. This Sunday, I'm going with my wife and some friends to maple syruping at Wood Lake Nature Center. That's one of the great programs going on in spring. So just would continue to encourage people. I know I always see lots of folks out at the parks, but to check out the, go enjoy the parks on your own or check out the programming that the recreation's got, that there continue to be options that are safe and adapted for the pandemic needs.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to say I really appreciate both Mary and Simon's comments about the, the end is in sight. And I prepared my item in advance, but now I feel like that person at like a work cocktail hour that can only talk about work because they were really sweet, thoughtful things. But with that in mind, my, my boring work thing is, it's what I'm saying, biking around and seeing the progress on the apartment buildings going up in Richfield. And just to, you know, recognize when we're going through the approval process, for those who are almost always talking about like the negative impacts and how to make sure it doesn't have too many shadows and too much traffic or too many problems. But now that we're all past that and it's actually going up, we're having, this year about 640 new homes are being built in Richfield. And like that is so significant. That is, look the stuff up, the equivalent of two new foreign towns or four city bellons. Like that's how many new homes are coming to Richfield, how many new neighbors we're going to welcome. So if you want, come bike with me and just catch, watch the sights from a safe, safe distance. But I'm really excited about it. And I'm excited to welcome hundreds of new families to Richfield.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. I just want to give a little shout out to former council member Edwina Garcia. We did our interview in, in person in the council chambers. And she looks like a million bucks. She looks happy. She looks great in excellent health. She's just looking great. So I'm just so happy for her and it was great to see her and see her doing so well. I know she's, you know, had so many health issues for the past four years, almost nonstop. And to see her so well and bright and shiny just really made my day. And hopefully, you know, I just want to ride the wave of feeling great, even just today's meeting. I mean, after most council meetings, I feel like there's so many amazing things coming in our future and happening right now. But I've been able to work with staff a lot on testifying and requesting support and funding at the state level for more flexibility and affordable housing. Also making sure that we invest in the future of Wood Lake, which is one of the oldest public wildland parks in Minnesota. It's 50 years old and it's in serious need of, of some TLC. And so I think about, wow, what is the future of Wood Lake going to look like? And all of the amazing work we're doing with accessory dwelling units, development and affordable housing. We just had a great work session on looking at how do we make sure that we have more housing options kind of for, that are not necessarily just one bedroom apartments or single family homes, but this missing middle as our staff talked about it. So, and, and then we're doing the organized hauling process and we're doing so much around sustainability. So we are just doing a lot of great work and I feel like I can really see the future of our community being bright and we are all a part of that. And that's in large part too, the exceptional work of our staff and our residents. So hopefully we can just keep sharing some of that positivity and hope because I know we all need it right now. But today and hearing all the different things that we're doing has really given me that positivity and hope. So I just want to echo that gratitude. All right. I think that's everybody. So I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you and have a great night, everyone.